Tonight's meeting. I'll do that one more time. We're going to call tonight's meeting of the City of Carlton's Planning Commission. Today is Monday, November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four at six P M. We're here in our Carlton Civic Center. We'll have Amy give our roll call and notify us of any changes to the agenda. And then we will be proceeding through the evening.
Roll call, Commissioner Chavez, Commissioner Nordstrom, Commissioner Stewart, Commissioner-elect Rhodes, Commissioner-elect Rake, Commissioner Madrid.
Here.
Okay, and we have Commissioner Amaya, who is out sick tonight. So we have a quorum. Chair?
Excellent, and I think we have one change to the agenda, and that is to recognize a another oath of office this evening.
That is correct. So we have an additional oath of office, and that would be the only addition at this time.
Okay, well, I can go ahead and move on to that at this time. So that will be the three of you. And Amy, are you doing this very?
Uh, yeah, I can sure can.
Me first? You will raise your right hand and read this section right here. Everybody here.
I, Brian Rake, the undersigned duly appointed planning commissioner for the City of Carlton, do hereby solemnly swear I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States of America and the State of Oregon and the Charter and ordinances of the City of Carlton, and I will faithfully perform my duties as planning commissioner to the best of my ability.
What's your name? There you go again. I, Ashley Rhodes, Ashley Rhodes, the undersigned duly appointed planning commissioner for the City of Carlton, do hereby solemnly swear I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States of America in the State of Oregon and the Charter and ordinances of the City of Carlton, and I will faithfully perform my duties as planning commissioner to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Thank you to both of you for offering to serve your time here. As you want them to find it's an integral meeting part to get back to our community. We appreciate you being here. We will start with the approval of two different meeting minutes, June ten, two thousand and twenty-four, and August eighteen, two thousand and twenty-four. They're found in the, starting at page three in our meeting agenda this evening. If anybody has any changes or clarifications or modifications that they'd like to make, we would accept that request right now. Mr. Nordstrom?
Um, on page four, since I was not present, I did not make the motion. So I'm not sure what that was. I don't know who made that motion, but I was not present at the on page four.
That's a very good one. Excellent. Thank you. It's exactly why we do this. Although it would have been a good alibi for you.
Since I was absent and then since I made the motion, so.
You're just that great. You can be everywhere at once. Are there any other proposed or proposed changes or modifications to either of the two meeting minutes found in the first few pages of our packet? Anybody Zoom land? Everybody okay with it? With that, we'll accept a motion to approve the meeting minutes as modified by Commissioner Nordstrom for the first of the two, the one that was for June tenth, as well as the one as written for August twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Commissioner Madrid takes a motion to approve?
We've got a motion. Do I have a second? A second? All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, both are approved, and we move forward to our next item, which is proceeding for citizen comments. We have one individual, Ms. Vicki. Is it Junker or Junker? How would I pronounce? Junker. Excellent. Sure.
I just had a question about the flood, because that's what we're here is for the flood planning. Does the City of Carlton have their own flood plan? And if so, why is there a change being made for the FEMA?
I think that's a really good question. We normally use the public comments because we're going to have a legislative hearing. So to make sure we give you really good answers, we answer questions on an agenda item within that specific one. So I think that's a great question. I'd like to know the answer to it, but we'll just kind of put it on ice and come back to it.
Perfect. Thank you.
Excellent. Was there anybody else on a non-agenda item that would like to make any comment this evening? Hearing none and seeing none out in Zoom land, we'll move on to our first agenda item this evening, which is electing our vice chair. This is a person who would serve in the role of chair in the event of the absence of the chair. Doesn't happen very often, but when it does, this is a helpful and very important role. Think at this point, we just take a poll for anybody who's very excited to serve in this contingent role. I know Commissioner Nordstrom, she comes from a culture where shaking your head left and right is an affirmative, right? With newest commissioners, would you like to serve in a role as a vice chair?
Anthony?
Yes.
Unless this is your backhanded way of saying you're going to have another child, I would throw my hat in the ring because it would probably never come up. So.
I I cannot.
I think I'm the I'm the second most experienced person. So sure, I've seen it done a few times.
And that that's perfect. So only because of your seniority, we would, our newest commissioner had offered himself too, but given your seniority, if you would like the role, you could have it, and we can have him in the in the deputy vice chair role, which.
I love it. I love it.
It's triggered. It's an informal position, but it's a helpful one, no less. So with everybody's permission, Commissioner Fernandez-Madrid is interested in serving as a vice chair. Do we need a motion or is that something that?
A motion would be preferred.
We would need a motion, perhaps of our deputy vice chair.
I make, excuse me. I make the motion to appoint Commissioner Madrid as the vice chair.
Excellent.
Second, second.
We've got a first and a second. We vote all in favor. Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Hearing none, best vice chair in the room, award goes to Annette. Thank you, Annette. Appreciate it very much.
And I'll make a motion for a deputy vice chair for Brian.
Yes, I would second that one.
It could happen.
And I trust all are in favor of Brian serving in that role.
Aye.
The matter passes resoundingly. We're two thousand and twenty-five meeting calendar. We have found it page eight here, and this is traditionally following the second Monday of each and every month, and I took a look at it and added these. I don't think we had a single offending holiday for two thousand and twenty-five. Is that right?
No. The only one in question this year would be possibly, I think it's October. Yes, it's not an observed holiday. So unless somebody has a real affliction against it, I I don't see.
I don't hear any, so I think we are set. So that can be found on page eight of our even meeting packet, again, following the standard second Tuesday, second Monday of every month. And of course, if there's ever a circumstance where a commissioner is not going to be able to be in attendance, it's always most helpful to let Amy and our team know in advance.
Just a quick question, Anthony. Wasn't there? There was an adjustment, I think, because of the council changing one of their dates, and I want to say it was National Night Out. Wasn't that in October? And I think that pushed one of ours back one week.
For two thousand and twenty-three, or twenty-two, for two thousand and twenty-four?
I'm thinking so. There there was one month where their schedule affected our schedule, and they ended up meeting, I think, the week after us, which was strange.
Do we do we have that issue this year, Amy? I think that's why we.
The council meeting dates are also on your app on the memo.
I don't see any. I don't see any conflict on there for right now.
The August twelfth meeting was pushed back a week for National Night Out. It was, it's usually a week before, but it shouldn't, it doesn't conflict with Planning Commission as Planning Commission meets Mondays.
Perfect.
Excellent. Thanks for the follow up. Our last one this evening is the one that comprises the majority of our meeting packet this evening, starting at page ten. This is the Flood Plane Management Code update. This is a legislative public hearing, and unless staff has any other instructions, I'll start by reading the legislative public hearing announcement. Sound okay? On the agenda this evening is a public hearing. You consider proposed amendments to chapter one, seven point five six of the Carlton Development Code title, Plane Management of City Kicks by two zero two four dash zero three. Section seventeen point two one, two point zero two zero, the Carlton Municipal Code identifies the type four procedure for conducting legislative public hearings. The Planning Commission conducts the first public hearing and will provide Carlton City Council with a recommendation for action. Thereafter, the Carlton City Council holds a public, separate public hearing on whether to amend the development code accordingly. At this time, I'll ask my fellow commissioners if there's any conflict of interest or abstentions that they wish to declare with respect to what is before us this evening for the legislative public hearing.
None.
Hearing none, seeing none from our commissioners, we'll move forward. Our order of the public hearing will be as follows. It'll be a brief oral report from staff addressed to the commission presented by the commissioner. Excuse me. This will be followed by commissioner questions of staff. Thereafter, any person attending tonight will be invited to present oral testimony. Staff will be invited to comment on testimony or evidence presented. And finally, the commission will close the hearing, deliberate and decide whether to recommend the city council approve the proposed amendments that are subject to hearing tonight. We're now ready for staff to provide a brief oral report. This will be followed by questions of staff. We'll defer right now from Mr. Scott White, our city planner. Thank you, sir.
There we go. Green light. All right, good. Uh, yeah, um, my name is Scott White, contract planner for the City of Carlton. And tonight on the agenda, we have a public hearing, as the chair mentioned, for one chapter of the city development code, one chapter that's specific to floodplain management. And this, the driver for this amendment is some changes to federal law specific to what's shown there on the PowerPoint that we have for this evening. The National Flood Insurance Program, NFIP, and the Endangered Species Act and that integration throughout the state. So this is something that a lot of cities throughout the state are going through at this time. We have some background information on that on the next slide, if we can get that here. First of all, I just want to make sure that we understand the scope of what's before the Planning Commission this this evening. We have a existing model code that has been prepared by a lot by FEMA, some by the by the state, not very much by by Carlton. Chapter seventeen point fifty-six is very much the same as you will find in a number of cities throughout the state. So I just want to make sure that that's understood. The city has adopted the 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 model code in the past, and what is proposed tonight is a replacement of of that model code. There's been an update and a significant one. It it's a model code that was recently produced in August of this year. And it's again specifically to this National Flood Insurance Program, the Endangered Species Act, and I'll talk more about that. Just for the record, tonight, we have exhibit one, the proposed changes to the chapter that I mentioned. We have a a table that's shown in exhibit two. That's the regulatory. It's it's kind of a a listing of of federal law and corresponding statute, Oregon statute and rules and federal law. And then goal seven, goal seven is a reference to the statewide planning goals. Goal seven is natural hazards. That's that's goal seven. And so we we have exhibit two mostly to explain the connection and findings in support of this proposed amendment. Exhibit three is a frequently asked questions document. It was recently produced in October this year by the Department of Land Conservation and Development. That's that L D L C D. That's what that stands for, Department of Land Conservation and Development. And they have a a number of things that various jurisdictions throughout the state have been asking. One pertaining to notice, we did a what's called a ballot measure, fifty-six notice. It was a ballot measure several years ago that the voters passed and said anytime there's a restrictive act that's being passed on property, you notify property owners accordingly. And we did so. That was recommended by the state, and so all owners of property in the city that have a portion of the hundred-year floodplain encumbered on their property were provided notice of this meeting. Also, slide or exhibit four is the slides of this presentation next to. So how we how we got here? A long fifteen-year history on this topic. The frequently asked questions exhibit three there has additional background on the history, but a quick summary of what the bullets show in this slide. Back in two thousand and nine, there was a lawsuit against FEMA. The lawsuit was a an an agency, an environmental agency. To the degree that that agencies can sue other agencies, I'm I'm not sure, but it was related to the Endangered Species Act that FEMA was was not following. All public agencies are required or federal agencies are required to follow the Endangered Species Act. So a lot of documentation and meetings and work with various agencies developed this, what's called the reason, if I can say it, reasonable prudent alternative, the R P A for short. And that was issued in two thousand and sixteen to avoid jeopardy of of species, specifically salmon, steelhead, killer whales were specific to the coast there. And then also the biological opinion or buy up for short was issued at that time. That's a four hundred-page document. There was delays and other questions and in September of last year, the same environmental groups that had sued FEMA said, what's going on? Why is this taking too long? And so I just earlier this year is when FEMA announced short-term implementation measures, letters went out to various city managers throughout the state, including the person right to my right here to Shannon, indicating the need for the city to to act. And on October one, we brought the matter of options identified by FEMA to the city council, Carlton City Council. We said, well, you can prohibit all activity in the floodplain. And we'd have to send notice on that and create a separate ordinance that says you can't do anything on private property. That's one option. Council didn't go for that one. We also said, well, you can update. FEMA has created a model code that applies additional layer of restrictions regarding habitat to endangered species. And I can do that, or anytime somebody wants to develop something in the city, you don't update your code, but you inform the person accordingly that there are federal laws out there that exist that are beyond what the what the Carlton Code has. So the the council said we pick the option where our where this chapter that we're talking about tonight is updated accordingly. And so we issued notices, and we are here for the first hearing. There will be a second hearing. Two hearings are required, as the chair mentioned, for a legislative item like this. And so the Planning Commission makes a recommendation to the the council for adoption of proposed texts that we have tonight. Next, next slide. So this is a better slide. This is one that has some color and interest to it. The the map on the right where the 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 killer whale is shown there, that that's not applicable to to Carlton. I just included it as the model code had some language that pertained only to the coastal area that we omitted. What is applicable is the area there on the map shown to the left. And that's the recovery domains, and that's important to know as this map has been been scrutinized and been critical in others, other jurisdictions throughout the state as to where the habitat of salmon and steelhead have have run, but this is the relevant relevant map and all of the jurisdictions, local jurisdictions, counties and cities within inside the green dark ten area there. If there's a floodplain that they have on in the city, they are, they have to be responsive to what we are proposing tonight. Changes to to ordinance or directing applicants to appropriate federal law. So I just want to make sure we have that that map. I'll refer to it again. I want to change. Now we'll go to the next slide here. And we go zero in to to Carlton. So this is an aerial photograph of Carlton. There was a question just before this hearing by a member in the audience. There's that I want an understanding of where floodplanes are in Carlton. And so the I've got one of two maps here. This is a map that you can go online to the FEMA website. FEMA kind of divides regions out. This FEMA region ten. But this this map is something available for the general public to take a look, and you can zero in on a property there. What I want to show with this particular map, you'll see some wiggly lines in the southwest kind of quadrant of the of the city there, kind of where we have Yam Hill River, kind of the park area too. The wiggly lines are the base flood elevation. This is the only area of the city where the floodplain elevation is known, where where FEMA has actually studied where a flood, an actual floodplain is 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 known. So the wiggly lines show also a number. They're kind of hard to to see, given the scale of things here, but it does show a a number. And we convey that number. If somebody is looking at developing property in proximity or in that area, we have that number, and that that's what we communicate to people through a pre-application conference or just early early conversations with with those interested in in doing something in the flooded, the floodplain. Now, there are some other areas. We have the Han Creek area there more to the to the east. Now, you won't see wiggly lines through Han Han Creek area. You just see a zone A, and zone A is the approximate zone. It it means that there hasn't been a floodplain that has been studied. So we don't know really what the base flood elevation is to these areas. If somebody wants to develop, this is where we have to say there's a there's an additional step where, you know, you have to study it. You have to hire somebody, hydrologist, somebody who has the knowledge and is able to go out and do the appropriate research. There's guidelines for doing this from FEMA, and and then they produce this as part of a record and come forward with a development plan. So so that's important to know as far as you have some areas in the city where floodplain elevation clearly known and some areas that are not known. And this is, it's not something unique to to the City of Carlton. I've worked for other cities that have approximate A zones and happy to talk about that. I don't want to go too much in depth. I want to go to the next slide here. So this is a little bit better. This is the the floodplanes without the aerial photographs, so you can see property boundaries. So there's kind of a base map here of just the the parcels that exist today in the inside the city. And kind of there's a red line there that shows the boundary. And so we'd have some areas. Waterbrook Park is kind of more in in the the floodplain area there. But we also have some areas in Han Creek that where you can kind of see, again, Han Creek area is an approximate A zone. So we just don't know. We know actually maybe one or two properties that have developed to the city where we have received information on that a study was done, but but those are specific to just a few sites on along Han Creek. Next, next slide, please. So I I mentioned that in August of this year, FEMA produced a model code. Not only do they do the model code, but they also produced a guide. The guide is available to for view online, and it's one of those things that helps applicants out further. This is a guide that we would would be informing applicants accordingly if they're interested in developing in the city. If it's clearly they have some floodplain on the property, that this is intended to kind of help out further understand the standards that you are are looking at tonight. And so I just wanted to mention that this is another document available out there, further explains the assessment and mitigation that an applicant would have to go through. Next, that's fine. So what what stays the same and what is subject to change in a in a nutshell? These bullets here, I can kind of quickly go through them. Format really stays the same. We have replacement code, but really the way that the the proposed, the new text is structured is very similar to existing. Definition of development remains the same. I I did pull that definition out as it's shown there to the right, and I want to make sure that commission is made aware of it as it's one that we communicate a lot to anybody who does propose something in the the floodplain area. If it's fill or grading or paving, it doesn't have to be actual construction of a dwelling or 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 anything. I mean, it it it's it's encompassing of a lot of activity there. So the answer is, as far as I've I've experienced, and this is, again, this development definition is consistent through for a lot of cities. In answer to a question, so I'm just going to be doing some grading or some fill. Do I need a floodplain development permit through the city? Most often, the answer is yes, based on this definition. So some definitions are new. Those that are new are related to the habitat assessment. The need for obtaining a floodplain development permit through the city does not change, and the process does not change. Exemptions, there's still exemptions for existing structures that are in the floodplain. You can still do minor maintenance type of work. That so that's not subject to change. And then information to be obtained or maintained. So the city has lots of administrative responsibilities to keep floodplain elevation certificates and information. All all part of the record. That remains the same, but new is the habitat assessment, and we'll go to the next slide to explain that further detail. So what's new? So this slide here, nutshell again. If activity isn't exempt, then habitat assessment. There's not a lot of exemptions really, but habitat assessment is the the new thing here. Again, have it for endangered species in that recovery domain. And it it must be conducted as part of a floodplain development permit. Again, the trigger, not much. It meets that definition of development. Yes, you got to do a floodplain development permit and 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 it's a question of impact to to the habitat area. Now, no net loss is one of those new definitions, and no net loss relates to the habitat functions in the floodplain. It could be vegetation, and it could be impervious surface or pavement. So there there's a list of things. The final bullet there, when habitat impacts are identified. The final bullet there when habitat impacts are identified mitigation plan. Must be prepared for the next slide there. So for habitat assessment. This is one of the things that we would be communicating. The staff would be responsible for informing the. The person interested in developing in the floodplain as to what needs to be. Done. I know as far as some of the things I mentioned there impervious surfaces is again paving. Where water is not able to penetrate through to the ground level. Vegetation vegetation is really loss of of trees. Water quality and water temperatures is a couple of things there as well. What's shown kind of in a box there to the right is kind of hard to to see, but it's. It talks about the qualifications. So there are some guidelines and. Yeah, more so I extracted that from the guidelines in that document I I mentioned. Guidelines for for who's supposed to be qualified to prepare. The the assessment, but there's more of this information also entitled forty four code of federal regulations. That's where. All of the technical data can be found. Next slide. This is second of last slide I have when habitat impacts are identified a mitigation plan must be prepared. And FEMA mitigation standards are kind of three part. One is to ensure that floodplain storage. I mean, the. One of the core functions of a floodplain in the event of a of a hazard flood hazard. The the floodplain functions for capacity or storage capacity of those waters. If the that area is filled, it impacts properties down downstream. So so it's kind of that question and water quality and and trees are specifically mentioned under vegetation for for mitigation. There's also mention of a riparian zone. And that it be one hundred and seventy feet from ordinary high watermark is kind of something defined, but that are showing a graphic. One thing I'll mention. There's a lot of other cities that are impacted more by by this than than Carlton. Some cities have a wider floodplain. And have have their downtowns impacted by it. So. Mitigation location is one of those things that's been. A matter of negotiation. If they in the future here, the planning commission receives an application for floodplain development. And you notice that the mitigation is off site, maybe it's upstream a little bit. That is something that is allowed. There's kind of some guidelines here with respect to order. Preferably on the same lot. But you can move it downstream and that was a compromise by some cities that have. Been been impacted more by this again floodplanes, the great one there localized to a riverine, a river. But there's some cities like Tillamook. Turner's another city that have the floodplain within the downtown and so it's sort of like, well, do we have to? Change our downtown in a way that goes back to a habitat for endangered species. And so know that mitigation can be off site. So I just wanted to kind of mention that. For for this slide, the last slide here we have is just the recommendation, the last page of the staff report, page six. We have the staff recommendation, a motion that recommends the city council approval of the replacement texts that we have tonight in exhibit one. Should the. Commission choose to make some changes? Just making sure that that's known for the record. We do have one that staff is recommending. It's highlighted in green there. There's sort of a threshold for. For subdivisions there. It's a greater than fifty lots or or five acres, whichever is less. So. Just an observation that there will likely be subdivisions that will be. Less than five acres and less than fifty lots. So the commission tonight can consider a a recommendation to reduce that or remove that. That's what the the staff report describes. So with that, I will be happy to answer any questions that the commission has. Okay, well, good, good question.
Scott, do you mind? Do you mind stating the question again? Because I think when you. Took over somehow I lost audio on the people sitting at the day, so I did not hear the question. Sorry.
That's on me and that I. Pretty got to push a button like the average chip. I will restate that again. Hopefully this time with better brevity. The question was. In in going through the FAQs, there were three pathways that were defined, the model ordinance method, which is the way that we're going. The permit by permit assessment for each applicant for any proposed developments within the the wetland. Or the prohibition of floodplain development. We're not going with three or two. We're going with the first one. And so the question to Mr. White. Was simply what were the considerations, the pros and the cons for why the city has gone with this route? Because I think it might also help some of the people here this evening in our attendance. Thanks.
Yes, thank you. And I I have the the benefit of as the liaison. Listening to Scott's presentation to council, so I'm pretty familiar with it, but it'll be interesting to hear the debate among you.
So I at the early part of my oral, I explained how, yeah, city council on October one. Made the the choice of of three there prohibit that, as I I mentioned, that's one of those things we. The code allows development in the floodplain is this highly restricted. And so to prohibit, that's that that's one that would involve a new chapter. With removal of a lot of things that are allowed right right now. And so there are some kind of concerns on a legal end to that particular option. So the other option, yeah, what we're doing is the option to to go through the the model code selected. Council didn't go into great detail. I didn't. So I don't want to, you know, paraphrase or or kind of speculate too far on this one. One of the things we did provide the council. As part of their meeting packet was just some staff observations on advantages versus disadvantages to each option. One advantage to having FEMA's model code as part of the city development code. Is is that it's it's localized to to one area. As I I mentioned, if it's not, it doesn't go away. The these these things are are federal law. We're still under the umbrella of the. Federal government and the state. So it's a matter of staff being mindful. Of of what is what is new in the in federal law. That that the existing code does does not address. So it's really an a a matter where. We have to ensure that applicants are made aware that the that if it don't, you know, pass the model code, it's sort of obsolete in a way. At least a portion of it with respect to to the the habitat assessment requirement. So so that, I mean, I don't know how much that influenced the the council, the council staff sort of just said that, yeah, they're. You don't get out of doing the requirement. So and and the permit by permit title just isn't the right. Description of it because that's been asked and answered by FEMA is, oh, no, the 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 federal law, it's encased in federal law. You just have to. To be mindful and tell applicants that they have to go to this guide, these guidelines. Because your code is just not up to date.
Anthony hit the button.
I promise, give me at least two years, I'll get this. I just my question was, does this, is it also designed to give a little bit of consistency for any of the property owners in the affected floodplain? And I. I think that was an inherent benefit. Correct. I I think it it's it's consistent. I I think it's easier that that way one centralized location. And something for us to point to this is this is this is, I mean, yeah, it's model code, but it is. It is a one source and it and it works in concert with other sections of code as well, so that 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 helps instead of us sending somebody out just to take a look at forty four CFR. And trying to decipher that. Also for posterity purposes to change over and staff who's going to remember it to get somebody from out of state, do they remember it? So, yeah, that that's really what we communicated to council and what they. It seems like the right best choice. Do any of the other commissioners have any questions? We'll start with Commissioner Fernandez Madrid.
Well, as I stated, because I was able to see this on the first go around, I was a little. Surprised at the lack of discussion among the council members. Scott's presentation was much. Much more detailed and it went much longer. It was a couple of hours, as I remember. And I I think going into it, having previewed the packet was more in favor of the case by case, because. That's also the way in Carlton we've been operating. Remember like the North Fourth Street one from a few years ago and Riparian and. We got into it and it was so much. To absorb. So I'm very happy that Scott is doing this presentation. But correct me if I'm wrong, Scott. I thought and I've also been following the city of McMinnville's process, which has been very parallel. Basically, my understanding is that it's most important, not only to bring us into compliance with FEMA. But so that our insurance packet is still under that umbrella, as you stated. And I don't necessarily think it really affects whether it's choice one or two. Which way planning goes because ultimately. Because the changes that the city of Carlton has made with review process steps one, two or three. We would still be looking at these things as offered. But my own feedback was on that bullet point about the five, five acres or fifty lots. Given the the geographic size of Carlton, I personally would like to strike that language. Just based on the last few floodplain projects that we have reviewed. They've both been between one, I think in a quarter. And the one on North Fourth Street, I think was a scosh under three. So I don't think there's that many five acre. Lots out there, certainly in the floodplain area that would be looking at development. So I personally would like to strike that language in its entirety. To make sure. That anything that is floodplain. As as a potential development in a floodplain would certainly continue to come to planning. And that's my two cents.
Thank you very much. Was there a question in there? I know we're kind of in the question part here and I I know that you had the the also deliberation to after the. We received public testimony that I had think some people want, but I did hear about insurance. Did you have further questions on on that? The how this relates to insurance or?
You might just give a a quick. Quick down and dirty explanation of that, I think, to the rest of the planning, because as I say, I've had the benefit of hearing the previous ones. But it'll bring us into compliance, which we need to do by the end of this year.
Yeah, correct. So, yeah, the the city is a participant in the national flood insurance program like a lot of the cities are and by a participant. Benefit of that is the the insurance end of it. If there is an event. FEMA would would go out as they have and throughout the country. And assess things. One of the things administratively, the the city is subject to periodic audits. Where somebody comes in and takes a look at the records and we'll talk about that if they haven't come, certainly I I my. Former job as planning director of the city of Dallas. I had an audit while I was there and you had to show them all of the records and show them what building permits have been issued and. Where the the floodplain certificates and and all that kind of stuff. That has to be. So there's kind of an administrative end to all of this as well and some reporting that the city has to do. So so this sort of helps in with that respect that we don't miss a beat. For for that purpose. There there's some other cities too that participate in what's called the the community rating system. Carlton is not, but for those communities that participate in that, there is a kind of a benefit to property owners and a reduction. Like twenty five percent reduction in. A flood insurance that they pay. And so that's very important for those cities that participate. In in that and some consistency with 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 code and administrative process again. That that's all important. I don't want to get to go far too far down a different path here because we're looking really just at code changes tonight. But yes, there are some administrative items as they relate to to insurance.
Thank you, Scott.
Commissioner Chavez, do you have any questions this evening?
I guess. I would just like to understand a little bit. Better about the. Base floodplain elevation idea because this is maybe what we would be discussing about the fifty. Lots and five acres. So. And I apologize for maybe not reading more carefully into the code earlier, but. So. Is the code? So there's this idea that you have to get this base flood that you showed the map with the squiggly lines. It said some of these had been determined, but some of these had not. And that if building is supposed to happen. In one of these areas that applicant will have to do a base floodplain study, right? So there's that, but then there's also the permit. Are those kind of two separate things? So whether you get this base floodplain study might be different than having to get a floodplain permit. Is that?
Yeah, so the so I'll try to make this, yeah, simple. The that definition of development that I had up there in one of the slides. Had it up there for a while to the extent that I wanted to make sure that you saw all of the things in that definition there that qualify for. A floodplain development permit through the city. So when somebody comes in to say, well, this is what the extent of what I want to do and it's kind of looks like it's going to be in the flood. It's kind of hard because sometimes there is an area. Of the city where we don't know exactly where that base flood elevation is. We may have some ideas as there has been. Projects that have come through to the city where somebody has done a study and so we have a ballpark idea of where that that would would be, but. You know, the that changes as the water as the level goes down and so. So, yeah, what we end up doing is is telling people that, yeah, you you will have a floodplain development permit if you your your study. You know, this is where if they're in an area of the city along Han Creek. They have to hire somebody to actually do the study to determine where that base flood. Plane elevation is. And then F then the, okay, now you know where it is, is what are, you know, are what are you, are you able to avoid all all activity in the floodplain? Or are you proposing something in the floodplain, even though it might be a minor encroachment? It's kind of an understanding of of how much, where and how much.
So then is that? So basically that would be done before a permit would be issued?
Yeah, so the study does before. Yeah, that's part of the record and evidence and materials that come before this commission. For for you to examine as part of a quasi judicial hearing. I know we have companies like AKS and would it be essentially a subsidiary of? Are we anticipating?
if any additional work subsidiaries of a company like that, who would be providing these technological services? Or is there a market just for homeowners, property owners here? Are there individuals that are readily providing these throughout other jurisdictions in Oregon? So this isn't, you know, something that they need a, you know, a, a priestess, you know, or somebody to guide them through?
Yeah, um, it is one of the questions that's been asked. Uh, FEMA's been pretty good with doing various webinars, offered to professional, and Amy attended to, I think, and I've, I've attended to, uh, and seems like, uh, the questions asked repeatedly. You know, who, who's qualify, who's not? And I had, um, the only thing that FEMA has produced so far, and one of the slides there, that little box that you couldn't read, had, had a degree. Yeah, yeah. So, so it doesn't go into doctorate degree, it just says degree. And is that a associate's degree, or is it, you know? So, uh, and, and so FEMA's, there's been follow-up questions of, all right, who are you, you know, what, what is acceptable? Because we're going to have challenge, or potential challenges to who is an expert and who is not an expert, and that sort of thing. So, so, yeah, we'll have an, oh, wait here, just a moment here, the public testimony, but, uh, yeah. To, to what I showed up on the screen is, is kind of the, the limits of what FEMA has, has stated. There, there's likely a surveyor involved. I mean, as far as the base floodplain elevation, always a surveyor involved. It might be a wetlands biologist involved, because a lot of times the, uh, wetlands and floodplain overlap each other. So that, that's what I'm thinking. It may be that you're going to get as part of your packets, uh, studies that encompass, uh, habitat assessment, and then also, uh, soil assessment for, um, for wetlands. It might be somebody, it might be a firm that does a lot of, of work and that there, I don't name any out there, but, um, yeah, there, there are some firms that have, uh, talented staff and, and fairly large numbers, so.
All right. I think I don't think I've got anything else that we need to address here, so. Now we will open a hearing for, uh, now's the time that we'll open our hearing for public testimony for those who would like to address the commission on this code amendment proposal, and I trust there are some people who might be here to present or ask, uh, some questions or have some oral testimony tonight.
Any questions?
Okay, so can adopt this?
I'm gonna, I'll pause you here, sir, because it's technically, we're part of the open, the open government rules, and this is a hearing. I'll just have you come up and then you give your name and your address, am I correct, Amy? Name and your address, so you're formally part of the record.
Raymond Junkers. Eight sixty East Garfield Street. I'm in the Han Creek area. I own part of Han Creek. So my question is, okay, if you adopt this program and the federal government changes its rules again, do you, does that follow the federal government rules, or are your rules going to be different than what the federal government rules are? And we've experienced FEMA out there already with my neighbors and stuff. There's been, there's been tests already out there. So there has been tests out there. But they're kind of a moving target. One day they come out and say one thing, next day they come out and say another. They move the lines as they want to, and they'll be the first ones to tell you, we will move the lines as we please. So, um, and the other question is, is why are we, why are we duplicating services that the county and the, and the state or the federal government already do? Just curious, is there a reason for that?
You say services, what, which, which service?
In other words, FEMA's already got their rules and regulations, and they come out there, they don't have a problem coming out there and telling people when they've crossed the line. Why does the city have to adopt more rules or change the rules that they already have? For permitting purposes?
I, 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 I'll let, um, our city planner respond in a minute, but I think generally the rule, the explanation is that we're updating the code to reflect that, that the proposed addition is a, is a model code that was, uh, is disseminated for application in towns like this. And in two thousand nine or some other time, there was another prior model code. And as a city, are those, those we've elected have chosen to implement the model code that has been distributed at, for everybody else to, to kind of use. Otherwise, it's just, it's such an overwhelming burden for each of these cities. And so we're implementing a code that we'll use to analyze any development in the floodplain. And then I, I think to answer your question, why is the city doing this? If FEMA is already doing this, I think it may just be a, maybe a miscommunication, because the city is empowered to do the development permit approval. So FEMA has authority, but their authority comes through us and ultimately through the city government in, in approving uh, and implementing development. So these are their rules, but we just have to comply with them through our development plan. Is that a?
Yeah, that, that's a, I mean, it's a good question, uh, because, yeah, wait a minute, why, why didn't they just? And it's kind of just understanding the, the role of, of what the city has to do as a participant. I, I mentioned, you know, that we are a participant and not to go into the weeds again, but, uh, but with that, we agree to administer the floodplain permit, that floodplain development permit, I should say, that's, that's, uh, that, that a lot of cities have the same sort of, a, a, a permit, and sort of just structured by, uh, by FEMA. Uh, I mentioned the audits, uh, that, that periodically occur. And so, uh, it's very possible that a city, uh, I mean, I passed in Dallas, I, I had all my stuff together, but, uh, but they can, they can find the city, they can, uh, take action, sue the city. They can refuse, if you're a member of, of the, uh, what the, the community rating system that they have, they, they can drop you from that. So they, they have some powers, uh, that, uh, they can act on if you're not following what they have established. So, you know, hopefully, records and things like that. But, so it's not so much a duplicate. Uh, the, the city is bound to, 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 to do the, the, what, what federal government has said, hey, cities, this is the, this is the umbrella to work under. You ask good questions far as what, you know, what happens if things are subject to change? It's very possible and highly likely that there'll be some more.
I've heard rumors that they're planning on changing a bunch of that anyway, through the federal government.
The, uh, even, uh, FEMA has said this through their workshops that they have had to kind of disseminate information and tell all the cities that, uh, that there's going to be some changes, more so on the mitigation. Um, I mentioned that there are some cities out there, uh, Telmuck is one that has a downtown encumbered by an.
Too much tough to build.
Yeah, so there, there are some cities out there, uh, that are very much impacted by this. They have, uh, economic interest in developing their, their downtowns, uh, and, you know, areas that have been urban for, for many, many years. And so there's some different perspectives out there that, uh, have been, uh, and that's been communicated to FEMA, and so there might be some changes in the mitigation standards, some loosening, possibly. I don't know, we'll see what happens. But the answer to, to that question is, we will bring it to the, the planning commission and say, there was a change, we need to update it. You know, the, we'll, we'll communicate its significance, if it is significant, and, uh, the commission, the council can, can initiate another, uh, change to, uh, to the code accordingly.
Okay. Um, the other question is, is, um, you're talking about floodplains, and then you start talking about endangered species and plant life in those areas. And people that own property in that area, that's going to make it kind of difficult, or not even, they don't even really know what they can do to maintain their own properties. For instance, about half of my property is Han Creek in your floodplain. So for me to go out there and take care of the trees that have fallen, get hit by wind or whatever, they fall on plants, all kinds of shit, all kinds of stuff going on there. And it makes it kind of difficult to understand what you can and can't do with your own property. I mean, it's your property. So, I mean, that was kind of a.
This be development activity, or just like clean, just like cleaning up?
Well, clean it up, but you got to cut trees, you have to, you know, and you brought up trees crap, you know? Just, 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 uh, all kinds of stuff. You know, the water comes in there, makes a mess, washes trash down from other people's places, uh, trees, brush, whatever. And that all becomes part of the wetlands at that point. You know, it holds back water for.
I think these rules specifically would just be, if you were intending to do kind of long-term development, if you wanted to build a whole barn or a processing facility out there, I think it's, it's a general.
It really is triggered on that definition of development, where you're proposing something, uh, if there is, yeah, the trees fall down and die, is, uh, that, that, that's another question.
It's a definition, you know, that's what I was getting at. I wondered what the definition is.
It, it's more follows the definition of something that is proposed by a property owner or somebody interested in developing land. But, uh, uh, yeah, I mean, uh, that, that question has also been asked of, of FEMA is to, wait a minute, a, a tree that supposed to stay dies, do they have to replace it? Not, not from that sort of just the aging of the, the tree. So, um, it's really when, yeah, you, you're proposing something that triggers that development definition there.
Well, for instance, like putting a bridge across, that you can maintain your property on the other side of the creek.
Yeah.
To keep it from being fire da- damage or anything like that.
So a bridge would, 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 yes, it, it would be. So that, that would be an area that, that could, uh, the base of the, the bridge, uh, may diminish the capacity of the floodplain, so, uh, that might be, uh, uh, something that you'd have to have a hydrologist, uh, involved with. Not to say that it can't be.
Make it real tough for a guy to maintain his property, man, I'll tell you.
Yeah.
Without having a million dollars in his pocket to do all these studies.
There's the, and, and there's the cost, and the cost too, that is also.
The cost factor.
Yeah, there's a cost factor. So you are not alone, uh, in, in these concerns. And they've been communicated throughout the state. I'm sure through the internet, you'll see a lot of people too upset about them.
There's some of the language in what you're proposing that, that, that makes it tough on people.
Yeah, it, yeah, yeah, wi- without, uh, yeah, without question, it, it is something. And I, I showed that history, uh, it, it's been, uh, debated back and forth. It's, it's not something new. It's, it's been, uh.
I know, but it'd be nice to get it squared away.
Yeah, yeah, it, it's, and, and there are people who are not happy with it too. Uh, so, uh, I, you, you mentioned half of your properties. One of the things that we do with pre-application conferences is look to see, okay, you know, can we concentrate development to the area of the property that, uh, is not encumbered by the floodplain? So the, the code does have some, uh, other chapters, uh, does have, uh, some, some relief in the form of a plan unit development, where you can kind of transfer the density, uh, to another, the higher area of, of the site, so. We would, you know, if there was ever some development potential, I don't know where your property is, I'm not here.
Most people have been living out there a while, they know how high the water gets.
But I just, I just.
They don't want to back the water up in their property either.
I, I just wanted to mention that, that not all is lost. The, the code does, uh, acknowledge some ability to develop the, the, the less impacted areas of, of your, of your property. And so, um, uh, you know, yeah, we, we would meet with you to, to explore tho- those opportunities.
Yeah, I'm not worried about me, it's everybody, you know, in that area, you know, that, uh, some of those, some of those flood, floodplain lines that you brought up, out there, you're talking about what, a hundred and seventy feet from where the water?
So.
Water level is?
Yeah.
That almost runs into some of the guys' houses that are already built in there.
So, and I, I want to make sure, I had it underlined as part of the slide, but I didn't bring out, that's another, uh, point, I want to make sure that the commission and others know. The hundred and seventy feet does not go beyond the floodplain. Uh, there are some, that standard was made for a floodplain that's, that's very wide, that's wider than a hundred and seventy feet. Along Han, Han Creek, I don't think that there's any segment that is wider than a hundred and seventy feet. I don't, I don't think so. So it's only within the boundary.
That, what you had up there is a lot wider than a hundred and seventy feet.
Yeah.
A lot wider.
Well, yeah, yeah, the, the regulatory authority of, of, uh, of the federal government and what's in our, our code only pertains to the floodplain and, and nothing else. It doesn't go beyond that.
Beyond the.
Correct, yeah, yeah. So if, if the floodplain is less than a hundred and, uh, seventy feet, it's only contained to the flood, that, that boundary of the floodplain, not, not the, it doesn't go out any further. And that's, that's part of, is part of the code and the guidelines. So it's, it's not, not any, anything more than what is shown as a floodplain. Unfortunately, with Han Creek, it's an unknown there, as to, as I mentioned. There's probably an, an idea where that might be, uh, as we.
Well, there's been tests done in the last five years. Last five years out there, they've had people come out and do hydro, hydro, whatever they call that, tests out there.
Yeah.
And, uh, and documented what lines were the floodplains that's been done.
Yeah, okay.
That's something maybe the city needs to know before they enact something like this.
And, and that would be part of your floodplain development permit to kind of justify, yes, what I'm doing is outside the floodplain, or if I'm in the floodplain and I'm doing something, here's the limits of that. This is how much of the area that I'm, I'm working in and, and a new layer of, of what, yeah, you'd have to assess the, the habitat impacts, uh, as, as, that's what we're talking about tonight.
Okay. A lot of habitat out there, and some deer wandering around so well, but. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name's Alice Patridge. I live over here on Coolidge Street. Um, I didn't come here specifically for the floodplain, but a lot of questions are going through my mind now. First of all, um, as far as these, uh, changes, am I to understand that there has been changes at the federal level that we're trying to come up to, or is federal level insufficient? And we want it mitigated to what we think is correct? Can you clarify that?
So the federal government has implemented new rules.
I can't hardly hear you.
So the federal government has implemented new guidance with respect to how the cities are supposed to implement planning within floodplains, within the hundred-year floodplains. And so we are bringing our code, which is obsolete and out of compliance, up to compliance with the new code. So it's not, it's not us going above and beyond. We're getting to the minimum competency or the minimum qualification to ensure that we, we, we cover that hurdle as a city. It's not, it's not going above and beyond, it's going to the minimum sufficient level of those three pathways, which was either, as I said, prohibit development, which we didn't want to do, because we felt that would be even more impactful. I say we, I, I wasn't the city council, but the city council chose not to prohibit development. They're going to allow it, and we didn't want to do it on a case by case. And so this model rule or the model code is updating, updating our former version of the model code, bringing it to compliance.
Did we have to be more constrained, or do we have more freedom now?
I think it's fair to say that this, there are additional restrictions and constraints on property owners, and that's why we have to go through the process, the measure fifty-six notice, letting people know when they have property interests of the multiple hearings, why we go through the planning commission.
Okay.
City council faces, because it is a property interest that is being restricted more so than it would be without this. And anytime we make those kind of moves as a city or as a jurisdiction, we have to give notice to the property owners.
Now, it's my understanding that FEMA maps, uh, have, are a flood paint, plane history of a hundred-year span of historically what's happened. If we are now increasing our construction, doesn't the new construction automatically require an increased adjustment to a wider spread of a floodplain for the lack of drainage?
I believe the floodplains are set based on.
Yeah, yeah, the, the floodplains are set. Uh, that, that hundred year is a little bit deceiving. Uh, it's a one percent chance, uh, is really kind of a percentage chance, but it, you know, it's, it's really, yeah, it was kind of a worst-case scenario there, uh, but, uh, it, it is kind of more the infrequent, uh, case of, of, of a flood. But it is established as to, uh, yeah, a high level of, of water, a, a flood that, uh, is very impactful and, and one that, uh, uh, where, where there's capacity need, where, where there's, there's the need for the property, the properties to, to, to function where they can have, have that water stay for, uh, for the duration of that flood and then go back and recede and, uh, in its normal course for the water, so.
Okay, now the city is bringing our require, our existing requirements up to meet
Correct.
at least the minimum of what the federal government wants. Now, the federal FEMA thing, do, um, we have to personally buy flood insurance. That's usually an additional add-on to generic house insurance, at least that, in my experience, that's been the case. If this compliance is brought up to code, will that have an insurance increase effect and/or potential availability or not availability for a homeowner?
I really can't answer to. I really can't answer to the impacts that uh this would have to uh to to an individual's flood. Plane insurance. Uh I can't, I can't speak to 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 what, it's not, it's not uh. Uh it's not intended to 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 do anything more or less than what uh what what the federal code describes. Uh so I I just don't have any information on that, I'm sorry.
Okay, and is there a plan in the future for whether or not, you know, this is going to be all built over? Is that something part of a long-range plan or is that something that's under discussion?
That that the area would would be built in?
Any, yeah, any of the, I mean, I've I've heard of construction potentially going in just over by the uh. The old church building, that's a house now, and it's, the floodplain shows that going right up into that yard. And I'm going, is that something that's taken into consideration when the permits are issued?
So I guess the quick answer is yes, anytime we get the, an application for floodplain development. Uh yeah, we we ask for, uh you know, there has to be uh submittal of materials. Uh the studies, uh some of the uh the slides that were up there uh had identified uh in in short. Uh the the items that we would expect to to see and a professional that would be hired to 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 do the assessment. And uh would go through a hearing like this one here where uh property owners would be notified and. Uh it would be a matter of evaluating uh what uh the the uh individual has as an application. Or knowing the the scope of work uh that's proposed and the mitigation to uh that uh that that they have. So it's not prohibited to develop in the in the floodplain, again, it's it's just highly restricted. And and that's still the proposal here tonight. Uh that it would still be, still be uh restricted. There's additional requirement now to evaluate the impact. Uh to to habitat.
Now, as far as responsibility goes or or action to recover loss from existing permitted areas. That have been impacted, that theoretically shouldn't have been impacted, is there a line of responsibility? Or is it, does that go straight through FEMA?
Oh, okay, I, yeah, I, uh so that, um, yeah, that's a matter of of, if if they're making an assumption. There there's a, if if there was an event, uh the hundred-year flood event occurred. And then uh subsequently, there was questions of whether or not uh there needed to be. Uh return of certain things that were mitigated, is that the question or?
Um I guess it would be more of a, if you're adjacent to the floodplain.
Uh huh.
And you have expectations of what you can and can't do, and then all of a sudden they're taken away. Because you find out, oh, this is, I've got the hood owl is in my tree and I can't do anything. Is there some mitigation for the? Uh landowner?
Well, yeah, so, yeah, yeah, so um a a tree, for example. Uh there's a threshold of of being six inches or more. If somebody says, I'm gonna take out a tree. Uh and it's in the floodplain, uh and I I need this area, I'm gonna pave it over. I'm gonna take out the tree and pave it, and I'm gonna use it for parking. Uh, okay, so it's not, not you can't do that, but it's gonna be a mitigation measure. It might be that uh a different portion of the floodplain, it might be that uh you have to plant some trees. And it may be that instead of uh imp- impervious surface, a a pervious surface of paving. Might be utilized so that the water permeates through the the soil.
Like maybe.
So so there are, there are options for developers to pursue, to which we would inform them about. And what a lot of the, what both the guidelines uh and the standards that are here tonight address in further detail.
Okay, well, I appreciate your time and I'm looking forward to having my other questions answered by Sharon. Thank you.
We do, excellent. Uh I just received word that we do have an online participant who has requested they speak. Is anybody else here in person that would like to give any comment or questions this evening? Hearing none, signal, if you'd like to invite the person who's online, do we have a name? Carlo and Julian is your screen name. Are they, I don't see them on our Zoom land, is that just Annette? It could just be Annette's thing, right? Like, cuz that's her. Oh, they don't show up on the gallery.
Yeah, there's, there's two listed, but I I'm me and Carlo and Julian is the winery next to Han Creek.
Okay, for some reason I thought they were associated, but if anybody would like to to speak, you can unmute now and. Waiting with bated breath. While we're waiting for them, I was thinking, we get ahead of this big tsunami, we go ahead and regulate the orcas. If they might be around here, if we could put some rules on the books now, it might be easier, so. Um it, we'll give one final try for the people at Zoom land who might like to make a comment. If for any reason you do come back and you'd like to say something, please just get our attention. Or as we will have at least one more reading, that'll be with the city council, correct? So there will be a second opportunity for anybody in Zoom land or listening to this at a later time uh with popcorn. There will be another opportunity to provide comment through the city council, and you can reach out to the city for purposes of doing so. Let's see here, so at this point, we don't have any further testimony. So we'll close the public testimony portion of this evening's hearing, the commission will deliberate, no further testimony will be repubbinated unless the public hearing is reopened. For deliberations this evening, does it, the any commissioner like to lead or start off or provide any commentary? I know we've been providing commentary throughout.
Anthony, I just wanna weigh in, on my multi-screen view here, I see myself, I see Carlo and Julie, and I see the hand up. But the mic is muted, so maybe he's having some technical difficulty. Cuz actually about eight o'clock, my connection dropped and I missed about seven minutes of the meeting before I got back in. So I don't know what kind of weather you're having there, maybe it's interfering with it somehow, but you invited him to. Come in at whatever time he figures out his technical difficulties. But I see, I see like four other people besides myself in the council. But on my screen, the multi-view is, the 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 uh microphone is muted, but the hand is up, so.
If anybody shows up and would like to, I'm gonna have a very liberal application of reopening, opening the hearing.
Technical difficulties, thank you, sir.
Um so with that, any comments by commissioners with respect to what we're seeing here today or questions of our staff? Um, okay, well, uh at this point, if we have no comments, uh if anybody, I mean, ultimately, I think we're updating a plan. We're not re, we, we're not reinventing the wheel here, but we're putting a new tire on the wheel. Um because ultimately, these rules are where the rubber will meet the road for the citizens. There is an impact. Uh to the community and to the property owners, it's beyond ultimately our control because as a citizen, as a citizenry and as a community. We need to implement these plans, so we remain in compliance with federal law, but we wanna do so as respectfully as we can. Um and so I I have no personal objection to this, I understand the frustration, but I understand that ultimately, our job. Is to keep our code as coherent as possible, as consistent as possible, so that every property owner, both those in the floodplain and those without. Can have expectations of what they will receive from us when they ask for development assistance or ultimately authorization. So it would be my suggestion, if anybody, because I'm the chair, I can't, if anybody would like to move to approve as outlined on page. Sorry, I should have said this out loud. Scott, can you point me to your?
Yeah, it was page six, and I do wanna uh note that uh uh Commissioner Madrid did have. Uh uh state some support uh for what was highlighted in green with uh on one of the slides there. To uh remove the threshold for um uh for subdivisions. So if the commission uh has a motion and supports, or Commissioner Madrid has stated there, that would need to be stated for the record as part of the motion. But there is a, um to page six does have a draft. Uh draft option for for motion bottom of page six.
Right, and it would, it would just be striking that uh fifty lot, five acre minimum. And I believe that was page six. I I had been going back and forth on my phone cuz I had my printout on it. Hang on. You've, you've, you've got the page number in front of you, Scott, don't you?
It's page fifteen, the overall packet, page six of the staff.
Okay, and that's, I mean, can I make the motion as stated to adopt minus that little six-word phrase?
Yeah, I I can, I can read the formal motion. Based on the staff report and testimony received. Uh Commissioner Fernandez Madrid moves to support a recommendation of approval for LA two zero two four dash zero three to the city council, as shown in exhibit one. Subject to the changes that we have discussed, that is the removal of the five acre and or fifty lots or more qualifications. So that any land or any property within the floodplain would be subject to this, and there would not be a size or a lot. Um lot limitation.
Correct.
Motion that is on the table from commi- for, from Commissioner Fernandez Madrid, and we would be inviting a second.
I'll second.
Second from Commissioner Nordstrom, now that we have a table motion, not a table, we are ready to vote on the motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those in in opposition? Hearing none, the matter will pass unanimously. Um, thank you for those who participated for this evening, and we will go on to our final agenda item, which is so magical. It's not even on the agenda, which is any new business or anything anyone wants to talk about, other than our new attendees in the party at your house tonight. This house. Okay, say it must be Ash. Okay, good. Good, anybody have any else, anything else coming up? Our team, anything on the, on the docket coming up that everybody should be aware of? Bring sleeping bags for the next meeting in December or?
December twelfth is our government ethics training here at the civic center, I believe at five thirty. Um it is a new requirement for all counselors and commissioners to take at least one time in their term. So I advise to get it out of the way as soon as you can and come on the twelfth. If you are not able to, they do have webinars available online, you would just go through their website and sign up that way. I can send you a link if you need to, but they'll be here in person, you can talk to them face-to-face, ask questions and get any of your questions answered. On ethics and government and serving your community, so.
And or should uh attendees bring snacks?
You can bring snacks, but we do have some snack thieves here.
Is that ethical, that brings snacks? Bring snacks and sharp elbows.
Yes, come prepared.
Thanks to everybody, we will adjourn for this evening as so long as it's approved by everybody in attendance.
Can I make a quick request?
Yes, please.
You, do you mind sending out those nice email or phone reminders? I really look, I really look forward to those.
Which reminders are?
Meeting, meeting reminder.
For the meeting, and and the date on that again is twelve sixteen?
December, it's December twelfth and the meeting invites for the calendars have gone out to your city emails.
Okay, so it's the twelfth, but I'm in Mexico, so I have never, in several years, been able to get those because of the firewall. But I'll put it in here now, so it's Thursday, the twelfth at five thirty, you say?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
We'll enjoy your southern latitudes, everybody, we are adjourned. Thank you to those in the community who came out to.
Thanks, Anthony, you guys have a good night.